All right, I believe everybody is in, Kalen, so I'm just gonna clean up a bit, but you're free to start.
All right, great. Everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Thank you for joining us, everyone, virtually for the Quaker Town Community School District Board Meeting, which is virtual. We're starting to get used to this. I'm not really actually. Okay, so the first item that we have here is I'm gonna require a motion to suspend board policy 006.1. And it's, we're gonna continue to do this each.
We need to do roll call vote first before we do that. Or no, nevermind, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Yes, okay.
I make a motion to do this virtually.
And we're suspending the board policy, which allows us to, to do these public meetings via electronic communication up until June 25th. So I'll need a second on that.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor.
It's a roll call vote.
Okay, you're gonna give me a hard time already, John?
It wasn't me.
Oh, who was it?
It's me. I said it's a roll call vote.
I thought somebody said why.
I did.
Oh, Keith, you're gonna give me a hard time already? Okay, so all those in favor say aye.
It's a roll call vote.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Go ahead.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Ms. Weed?
Yes.
Mr. McCucci?
Yes.
Mr. Reimers?
He's not here right now.
I saw him pop in. Okay.
Yeah, he's there somewhere.
There he is. Mr. Reimers?
Clearly, my mute thing didn't work. So yes, I vote yes.
Mr. Spear?
Yes.
And Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great. All right, we're gonna move on to our flag salute. Joe, if you wanna get us going with that. I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Now, we're gonna move on to the roll call.
Mr. Reimers?
Here.
Mr. Spear?
Here.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Jackson?
Fred?
Mr. Kern?
Here.
Mr. McCucci?
Here.
Mr. Rothmanowicz?
We have Georgie Fisher, Director of HR.
Somebody mute, please. George Fisher.
Ms. Weed?
Here.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Here. All right. There will be an executive session that immediately follows tonight meeting, tonight's meeting to discuss a personnel matter. This meeting is being recorded by our board secretary. Moving on to the approval of our minutes, I'll need a motion to approve the minutes of the May 28th meeting, virtual meeting.
So moved. By Mr. Jackson.
Second, Mr. Kern.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the motion carries unanimously. We're gonna move on to our public comment, and just to remind everyone here today who may not have joined our previous meetings, we are going to allow two areas for public comment, and you're gonna email us those comments. And Anita, can you remind us where, which email, if the public wants to give us a public comment?
At this point in time, if you have not submitted a request to speak, which comes to my attention, if you would like to email your public comment to Terry Sanangelo, that's T-S-A-N-G-E-L-O at Q C S D dot org. She will read the comment aloud. Please keep your commentary under 750 characters, words, characters.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, do we have anyone that previously signed up for a public?
I do have two comments. One is, and actually both of these comments deal with addressing the board regarding a return to school in the fall. One is from, a request to speak from Leanne Habberly, and the second is from Amy Einoff. I don't know if we wish to just let them know that this is part of the superintendent's report, a discussion about the plans for returning in the fall. I don't get any additional commentary other than I would like to discuss the possibility of returning, students returning in the fall.
So no opinion, just really just wanting a discussion? Okay. Noted. Thank you. And we are going to be discussing that. In fact, I believe we will be discussing it next in our superintendent's report, and I'll turn that over to Dr. Horner.
Evening, ma'am. Thank you very much. Good evening, board, and ladies and gentlemen in the audience. We have a couple items. The big one that we just were talking about for reopening is the last item on the superintendent's report. The first one is from Mr. Shock to talk about state and federal funding for COVID.
Sure, there's a document in the superintendent's report. It's just what we've been working on. There's a couple of different grants out there. The Business Department has been working with Janelle Hilton, who writes our grants to apply for what we believe we're eligible for, which is roughly $870,000. And what you'll notice is it's, the way we plan on utilizing those funds is a combination of multiple things, including costs we've already incurred, and then costs we believe will have opening up here in the fall. So the document's there. It's not a complete document. It is a work in progress. We still don't have all the information from the state that we need to apply, but we wanted to provide that as an information item for you.
Zach, is that, that funding that's above and beyond what we normally receive from these two entities? Or is this just making sure we get what's due to us?
So this is above and beyond the basic subsidy, BEF and SEF. This is above and beyond that.
Okay, any other questions? Are we gonna be moving on to the next item?
Any more questions on funding? The next topic is about Nighty Elementary School, and we officially received word this week that Nighty most likely are, it will not be ready by mid-August for us to fully occupy the building. Their projection is the first or second week of August, or excuse me, September, no later than the first of October. And Jamie Lynch sent us a detailed email about what's, what's going on, but the bottom line is that they need a little bit more time, and we would know exactly by the end of July. So given that we will be, from what our parents want from their surveys, that we know about from 10% to 30% of the students, our parents want to keep their students home in a virtual environment. We're recommending to you all, and we'd like your support, that we would open Nighty in his first few weeks of school in a virtual scenario. So then we can move everything out of Nighty Valley and have the classrooms set up as we're allowed to occupy the building. We'll be starting, we'll start moving in there in July and August, soon as the rooms become available, but we won't get full occupancy for students and faculty to work until later. So if we are allowed to do this, we can have the buildings all set up and ready to go for when we get the green light from Doug Wilhelm from the borough for occupancy. So if there's any concerns with that, I know I've talked to a couple of you about that. Couple of you might have had a concern, and I'll just see what's going, what you think.
And to, and just to be clear, because I know we talked about this, Dr. Horner, if at all possible, we would, if we can get the kids in there, and it's no safety risk, and there's still some work to be done, we would still like to optimally start them off in that building if at all possible.
Yeah, yes, ma'am, but it, just like I have gone through this locally with a high school several year, four years ago, and we occupied it by phases in the different parts of the building, and Doug Wilhelm's is the Borough Safety Officer. He would have to give us the green light, but by allowing us to plan this way, we can move, and Rob's in the conversation here somewhere, we can get everything out now and start prepositioning it into the classrooms, because a lot of the classrooms are already, are already complete or near complete.
I did have a question then. If they did start the first two or three weeks in a virtual environment, that does not affect the 180-day requirement, correct?
No, sir. No, sir, it will not.
Is the reason you're interested in doing that is to, because you can't instantly move from Nighty Valley and poof, create a ready classroom?
Yeah, yes, sir.
The move can't, the move takes more than a weekend, in other words.
Yes, sir.
I think we have to appreciate that. One of the things we are looking at also is that we got our construction schedule pushed back unfortunately due to the coronavirus. So it's not like our workers failed in any way or anything like that. It's just that we had a series of downtime unfortunately, and the fact that we're only looking at like a two to three week delay is frankly a pretty good thing if you think about it. So I know that's not the ideal situation, but students just went through approximately three months of virtual learning. So I think they could handle three weeks. It's not ideal, but it's certainly the right choice if we have to.
And, and we did not plan on.
I, I think there's, there's more to the discussion than just us saying, you know, look, we're gonna, we're gonna say it's a three-week virtual. I mean, this, this affects families, and this affects parents, and this affects, I mean, this isn't like, I feel like we're having this conversation willy-nilly, like, oh, well, we're just gonna push school back. I'm worried about it. I don't, I don't know why we're not more concerned about it.
I can tell you, I am. My, my kids go there. Well, oh, no, I have one going in sixth grade. Oh, that's so sad. So now I'll have one child that'll be left in that building, and it does have me concerned. I've spoken to teachers about it, and that's why I'm saying I think we need to do our best to try to get them in that building, even if it's not completely done. You know, if you remember, our whole idea was that we were gonna vote to whether we were gonna keep the kids in there for the full construction. So if we, you know, if we could do that, I don't see if it's no safety risk. I'd like to see those kids back in that building. So maybe we should just start having those conversations with the safety folks to see if that's possible.
I did request with Zach to see, there was an option earlier that could have possibly resulted in us possibly paying for overtime to get in earlier, and he was gonna look into seeing if that was still open or if that was still possible. I don't know if he got any answer yet.
So.
They are working overtime right now, according to the email from Jamie, and they're not charging us. We're still sitting on, on top of what, about 1.4, 1.5 million dollars or more of our contingency that we have not used of the 1.9 million that's out there. But we're, part of our planning strategy for using that money is for you to come back and vote to use that for capital projects, that bond money.
Yeah, so I did check on that, and it's not about overtime anymore. It's about sort of the order of operations of the project, supply chain, and getting certain certificates that we need. For example, the elevator certificate, there's a kitchen certificate, so those types of things are not gonna be done in time. And according to our construction manager, there, there is as close to zero as you can be percent chance that we will have an occupancy to start the year in that building.
So I, I would wanna see maybe proposal for a more, like, I haven't thought about it real hard, but if you have the ability to keep the kids in Nighty Valley while the construction finishes or while parts of it can be open, then the move as a classroom or two or three classrooms or sections open, I don't know. But what about a, not an all or nothing, right? Like, right now, we're thinking all or nothing. But what about a gradual, you know, as we can, we move, like, how much can you move in a weekend? That would be the number of classrooms you can, you can, you know, move over, or you wait until Thanksgiving break or something. But I would be more inclined to keep things stable, especially for the parents who've suffered already on house arrest, and, and come up with a strategy to potentially move, move as we can. And I would trust Rob to try to figure something out.
Okay, when I think.
Are you asking, I was like, Keith, are you, I understand your concerns, Keith. I guess the question is, are you, would you like to see the administration expand its thinking process and come up with a physical building solution or?
So I, I think, I think what I, the way I look at these subjects are, you know, are we being opportunistic, given the fact that we've, we're in the midst of a pandemic? And, and taking advantage of that to do this, you know, sort of virtual schooling? Or, I mean, what, what happens if it was a regular school year and virtual wasn't even an option right now? And, and how would we handle it? Is there, is there other places? Is there, you know, room at the sixth grade center where we could put some kids? Is there some way you can move things around? I, I don't know the answer. But I, I just wanna be mindful, and look, at the end of the day, the answer may be that it's a virtual, it has to be virtual. But, you know, we have to understand that there's gonna be impacts to families in our community, especially the Nighty families, that are gonna have to scramble to either extend daycare or figure out what to do if, if, you know, the parents can't be home. And so I just, I, I don't, I think we need to have like, you know, here, here's option one, here's option two. I think it's really easy to say, yeah, do the virtual thing, but I just think we need to be a little bit more conscientious about it.
Yeah, I would, I would put virtual far down the list, because that's also assuming you trust the schedule. I don't trust the schedule. We don't know what can happen. Therefore, let's plan on people being in physical buildings. We have Nighty Valley leased until the end of the year, right?
Yes.
We have the option. So there's no rush. There's no rush.
The concern, the reason, and I, just so you guys know, I, I would rather be in a building, but I also think the concern was having kids learn. There's two sides of this. You have kids who are gonna be going to a school, some of them for the first time, a new school, having to adjust their parent, teachers having to go back and forth with their things, having to learn a whole new environment. But then on the flip side, you have what everyone else is discussing. If you're meeting your teacher for the very first time, ideally, that's not good in a virtual environment, so I can see both sides.
How easy is it for us to do these surveys, these Google surveys now, possibly?
I don't need a survey.
Just the Nighty parents.
Yeah, we can build, we can build a, I gotta think we can solve this, and, and. Parents.
One of the things that was. And parents. One of the things that I, I think it's true, we have, we have Nighty Valley open to us. One of the things I did hear, though, is that we had a pot of money, and I am not suggesting this is an option. I'm just throwing this out as one of many. That pile of money. As we have to use it for a project next year, if, if we could use it to help the kid, help the situation with the kids. I'd love to see people in a building set, so it sounds like everybody else is thinking the same way. Kalen, maybe we wanna ask the administration between now and our next board meeting to give us, you know, a handful of options that would get the kids in a building setting for, let's shoot for a month, because that's a good length of time that we can plan on and come up with options, costs, a handful by next board meeting to consider.
Yeah, that's, I'm fine with that.
Yep.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think it's reasonable. I just, you know, I was trying to set a different expectation and just accepting it as this is our answer. I think that we, you know, we could get creative. We have gotten creative, and, you know, at the end of the day, it might be the best option, like I said, but I think we just need to be, understand the impact is, is, it could be a lot on families.
Understand. Next, next topic is the Quaker Town student and recent protests that we had, the, the recent graduate and students, if you recall last week, even though it seems like it was a light year ago already. On Saturday, there was a protest in town, and Joe, could, I shared a couple pictures with you. And as I'm talking there, here's some of the pictures that, that I took, where they're, they are recent graduates. What I think was worthwhile from this experience and observations of our recent graduates and our, and our seniors and juniors that participated in organizing this event was that they were many of our student leaders and participants in what happened three years ago, and our response, proactively, our response in making racial diversity and, and promotion of a healthy learning environment for all students and all employees over the last couple of years, and the students were wonderful. There wasn't, what was really interesting, Scott McElroy and the Borough Police planned it, planned flawlessly. There was not a police officer out there that was in, that was in uniform. There was a lot of police officers out there, but not in uniform. So there was not attention out there from that. I was, I was out there as just an observer, and, and I guess being there, being a participant, I was there with Craig Stats, Representative Stats, Chris was there, Kalen was there, Jen was there, Ron was there, that I saw along with hundreds of our graduates and students, and then some lot of people that I didn't know. Kalen, would you something you'd like to share?
Yes, actually, I was planning on doing so a little bit later, but since you asked, I just wanna say how proud I am of our students and how they really have been engaged in this, this whole process. One thing that, a different perspective that I did mention to someone in the email, and something I, I hope that the community will consider, even those who may find it somewhat controversial, which I don't, but it's our, it's our job as schools to really teach our kids to think for themselves, rather than teach them what to think. We're here to teach them to think critically. And at this time, I think it's great with the students engaging and challenging issues that the world presents currently. It teaches them about the First Amendment, teaches them about organizing for a cause that they believe in. So I'm just super proud of them, and I felt like their words were very inspiring, and it gave me a lot of hope for our next generation.
I agree with that. I thought it was extremely positive. It was a little hot out there, though, wasn't it, Kalen?
I had one of those little fans.
Yeah.
Put around your neck, and it's like, it was really warm. We had a couple of people that were, you know, fainting because it was a little warm out there, but it was, was peaceful. Everyone really rallied together. And it's a reality in this community that we have an issue with racism, and I don't say that lightly. And so I think it's great that, and I hope that we can continue to have the conversation and everyone come together, because I don't, even though I feel like it's a problem, I don't feel like it's representative of a majority of the people in this town. Majority of the people in this town are great people. It's just that we have to address some of the old-school thinking, I guess, and, and I'm very proud that our students led the charge in doing that.
And there were a good 500 people, I would say, there, wouldn't you?
I think so.
Attended, all ages, and it was really student-led. I thought it was extremely positive. And thank you, Superintendent Horner, for getting a picture of my daughter in there. I like that.
Well, one other thing that, that I sort of get, got from this was it not only got kids up and got them out to do it, but it gets them talking about civics. It gets them talking about how, you know, if they wanna institute change, one way to go about doing that. And anything that gets them off of Minecraft or off of, you know, video games and out and doing something constructive, to me, is a, is a really good thing.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it was, made me wanna have graduation ceremony with that many people attending. But I guess that's a, we'll have to stick with the virtual graduation. But it was, that was, that was my thoughts. All those people out there, like, wow, we could have had a graduation. But.
That's your thought, John?
Yeah.
Nice job.
Yeah, and everyone had, everyone was wearing masks. I will add that too. Outdoors wearing masks.
Jackson. I'll call you.
Did Ron have a mask on? I thought he did.
No.
Ron!
It depends on where you saw me. I was sitting all the way back by the snack shop, all by myself, under the awning, so I was keeping out of the sun. So I was away from everybody. I did need a mask.
Uh huh, yeah.
Listen, you can't eat snacks with a mask on.
The next, the next topic are the superintendent goals, for draft goals that I forwarded on to Kalen earlier. And, and I'd like to just put them out there publicly, and then over the next couple of weeks that we work through them, and, and my respectful request is that they're, if my goals are approved, our district goals for next year are approved by, by, at the next meeting. The, we, this will be the first time in, what, four years, we'll have a meeting at the end of June, but we would have them approved by the next meeting. The preponderance is to continue working on the systems work, like our six-year cycle in our academic program, but doing a heavy emphasis on pandemic and post-pandemic work with, with our safety plan, mental health, social, emotional work, and also our academic catch-up. We have to figure out where our students, what this, what the educational loss was this year, and, and we, and all the strategies, developing the strategies, working with teachers, with professional development to get our kids up to where they should have been.
Dr. Horner, I, I am so sorry. I apologize. I, I probably should have talked to you ahead of time. So we, as, I know we didn't have a lot of time as a goals committee to really have, you know, meetings because of COVID, and there was a lot of things that were going on. So I just want to add a little bit of caution that those goals are probably gonna change quite a bit. You know, we had a chance, the committee did have a chance to review them, and there's some components of it that we found that were very useful. There's some additional things, though, that I think we still wanna have continuing conversations with the rest of the board, as well as the administration. So those are just preliminary. I just wanna make a note of that, and we're gonna continue the conversation.
Thank you.
What's the, the deadline is when? The end of June or?
Well, the.
It's like August, but we try to get it done sooner so that we give them a chance to organize in preparation for it. It's like August, but we try to get it done sooner so that we give them a chance to organize in preparation for it.
That we were going to have another retreat before all this COVID stuff with Tom.
We're supposed to do something before the next board meeting in two weeks.
So are we going to try and get that set up then?
Yes, please. Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's where the, you go over the superintendent, assistant superintendent evaluations and, and talk about how we're going to, how we're going to go about our work for next academic year.
Those retreats are usually catered. Um, is there a possibility you can send some takeout our way?
Grab home.
I wanted to interject.
Go ahead.
I just, I just wanted to interject while you had mentioned Dr. Harner about, um, the retreat where you go over the superintendent and the assistant superintendent evaluations and goals. Remember, it's a reminder for board members that today was the deadline to submit those evaluations to Barb Phillips and Human Resources. If you have not done so already, please make sure you do as, as soon as possible.
You will get mine tonight.
Aren't we allowed to be in groups of? Aren't we allowed to be in groups of 25 or less now? Can't we get together as a board and have a retreat?
I would do it.
Aren't we allowed, is that, isn't that the magic number from the state directive of, of yellow, 25 or less or something like that?
It is. We still have to do, we have to do six foot distancing. Is that, can we do that too?
Sure, we can, we can all meet in the auditorium with the high school, right? You go over there, I'll go over there.
I think you could do that in the district office.
Yeah.
And, and the board.
For us, COVID just ripped the rug right underneath our feet. And so the, the goals, it, it's going to be a lot different than we were anticipating. And I know that this, it's the same way for the administration. So it's going to be a work in progress and it's definitely going to look a lot different than previous years, considering our current situation.
Thank, thank you, ma'am. Last part and.
My concern, we, we can't do both the, the evaluation portion and have a discussion about new goals in, in one meeting, can we?
I think we tried that before and it didn't work out very well.
Yes, we did. Yeah, we, it was, it was a disaster. We, we couldn't even get through a couple of the domains of the goals.
Yeah.
And we didn't touch the superintendent evaluations, I think, or vice versa, something like that.
Vice versa, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I would split the two and figure out a way to, uh, share your partial progress or something. So that we're, you know, so it's not sprung on us.
Well, we got. Yeah, we, I know the administration has their shared, and I, I think we shared ours previously. So now we just need to figure a way to kind of mingle them, especially the changes since COVID. We'll work on it.
Well, Kaylin and I can talk about it tomorrow. We'll get it.
Sounds good.
Figure it out. Um, the last, last item is the academic year reopening, our initial plan. Um, if you could put that on the screen. Oh, oh, back to beginning. Okay. This is our agenda slide. You see, pretty simple. I'll hand it off to Ms. Edwards. Ms. Edwards handed off to Dr. Hoffman. And we, then I respectfully request that you hold your comments, questions until we get to the end. And then it'll be all your time to reflect and, and to help provide us, uh, your guidance. Next slide. Our, our planning process, obviously it's backward planning. August 31st is the first day of school. Was it less, oh, two, uh, two months, two weeks from now or something like that? It's going to come quickly. Excuse me, sir?
My wife is counting and it's 89 days.
Thank you very much. Uh, we need a break. Anyway. Our, obviously health and safety considerations are our top priority for our, our students and our, our employees. We've heard a lot about the concerns for, obviously from the surveys. Fiscal challenge, we have a five to $6 million structural deficit. So as we talk about spending money here or there, um, for a, a challenge to, to meet the, um, health and safety guidelines. We've got to think that it would, there, the money's not there in the budget unless we go into our fund balance. We, uh, three weeks ago, four weeks ago, we created a task force that has four work groups in it. The task force leaders are Ms. Edwards and Dr. Hoffman. They're the co-leaders of the group and they've been meeting several times a week on weekends and they'll be presenting this evening. Transparency and consultation with parents, faculty and staff. As you know, a couple of weeks ago, we, we surveyed, surveyed our parents. And with 1,500 responses, we surveyed our faculty with 480 responses at a little bit over 600. So with, uh, we've got a very good idea what folks are thinking. Obviously we have to think about multiple options. You got the, everybody in the class, nobody in class and, and things in between. And, um, if you, as you've seen from the parent survey, there's a lot of folks out there that would like to remain in a virtual environment till we have a vaccine and, and then they have others, as long as we have the health and safety provisions provided in each one of our schools. And then there's some who just want their kids back in school. So we have that wide spectrum. Collaboration with Bucks County School Districts. Uh, I've been meeting since long before we left school in March. Every day back then, it's been three days a week. Um, we met today for two hours and 35 minutes with the Health and Safety Director. So, it, it's a very fluid, is my next comment. The fluidity of, of this environment is incredible. What we were planning and, and, and a lot to, to talk about tonight, we provide you information for board discussion and decision-making. A lot of things changed this afternoon. So, um, there's a lot of fluidity. Custodial expectations. Parents, one of the things overwhelmingly is that, you know, I got to get back to work. And I, I think, um, Keith talked about a little bit earlier when we were talking about nighting. The, about the, with folks having to get back to, to work. A lot of our, our parents were key to essential employees that needed to be back to work and they didn't have anybody helping their children at home. You have single family situations. I've heard, received emails. We've received 122 pages of comments from parents. Um, and I've read them all and, um, and, and so there's a lot of custodial expectations of our families to, to have their, their children during the daytime. Mental health is a huge issue and it's going to continue being a huge issue. And that's, uh, one of the key work group, uh, requirements and ex, and work groups and equity. We talked about this with the board and with the community in my blogs about making sure that all of our students are students with disabilities. There's our English language learners. Some of our, our families don't have the access to communications at home and we had to provide that access. And then in turn, coming back into our environment in the fall, we have to catch it, catch a lot of them up. And so there's, we have an equity task force. Next slide. I'd like, uh, Ms. Edwards to talk about the, the PDE guidance for health and safety and what the county has given us. Thank you.
Um, good evening, everybody. Um, we are getting some very interesting and, um, to a, a large extent inconsistent guidance from, uh, the different agencies that form, that are going to form our sandbox. PDE, I believe Dr. Harner forwarded to you, um, a document from PDE that outlined their expectations. There were, um, I think it was 23 elements and things that, that we're expected to address in our safety planning. We are not permitted to open without having a board approved, um, and publicly posted safety plan that, um, we also submit to PDE. Um, and many of those things are, uh, that were listed are, are relatively restrictive. So, no one disagrees with cleaning, sanitizing, disinfecting and ensuring good ventilation. When it comes to the social distancing and other safety protocols, uh, there are some, um, significant differences in expectations. And I listed some of them there. Um, and as I said, I believe Dr. Harner had shared the actual template with you. So you could see the kinds of things that we were expected to consider. Joe, you want to flip the side, please? Okay. Um, some of the other elements besides on the previous slide are how we monitor student and staff health. And then how we protect students at risk, higher risk of severe illness, um, and the use of masks and things like that. And then what kind of professional development we're going to have for staff and students to make sure everyone is educated about how to work in, in this environment safely. So as I noted on the slide, there, there really are some significant differences in the expectations of the PDE guidance. And with what the local department of health is comfortable with in terms of the safety protoc, um, protocols. And so we're now trying to, um, to navigate that, um, that distance, which I think is, you know, maybe a little, little challenging. Next slide, please, Joe.
Nancy Anne.
Yes.
Do they try to distinguish between how to deal with different age groups, adults versus kids? Or is it, is that part of the confusion?
If I had to sum it up, I would say that the PDE guidance appears to expect some pretty detailed planning and protocols, which can vary by level. It's, it's not mandates, but it strongly is suggesting that you have certain things in place, whereas the local department of health seems to be much comfortable with a much looser approach. So the other, it's actually a nice segue, um, into the next part, because the other input that helps define our sandbox is our, uh, what our community is thinking and what our staff are thinking. Um, and so the link to the responses and comments are included in the, in the presentation and the board has already received those. In the parent survey, it kind of broke down roughly one-third, 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 meaning, um, we had, we had 35% of our families that are comfortable sending their children back to live school, no, no questions asked. We have 37.7% that say they are only comfortable returning to a live environment if all required safety protocols are in place. Um, and then the remainder of the respondents are not comfortable in some, in some way. They either are not comfortable and they would prefer that we have a virtual option or they're not comfortable and they definitely want a virtual option some, somewhere in that, um, in that range. So our, um, you know, our community expectation appears to be that we will have some safety protocols in place. And in the other areas of the survey, it breaks down what some of those key things are. For example, limiting the number of children in a class, over 1,100 of the respondents were either, that was either very, you know, very important to them or it was important to them. And that, so that's a lot of people that are thinking that that's a good, a good idea. The wearing of masks, which is, can be controversial depending on the age of the student and the situation and so forth. A little less than two-thirds, 972 families or respondents, I should say. What's that? 972 of the respondents, um, put that in one of the top two categories in terms of their comfort level with that. So, so out of the survey, we, you know, the, I guess my key takeaway is we have people that are in very different places in terms of their expectations. So that what we are, um, offering and doing is going to need to meet a variety of needs across the spectrum, not, not just, um, one set of needs. In the staff survey, um, it, I, actually we were a little, we were pleasantly surprised at how many of our staff members are comfortable returning to work, um, in the fall, to, to live work. But again, we had, let's see, I lost my number here. But there's about a third of staff members who are comfortable returning, but expect there to be safety protocols in place. So, that was one of the, uh, the clear, um, takeaways from there. And you, you have the detailed information. And for people that are accessing this later, the links are there in the, um, in the survey. So, so that kind of defines our sandbox. You know, in terms of what we're working with. Um, and as Dr. Harner mentioned, uh, Dr. Hoffman and I have been leading a task force that is working on what, what should we do? What do our models look like? Um, and Dr. Hoffman is going to introduce the, the task force and, and let the subcommittees, the working groups report out a little bit on, on what they've been working on.
Thank you for that introduction and good evening, everyone. Um, so I just put together this basic slide that, um, I hope the, the board members and anybody in, in the public will take a few minutes to look at if you have a chance. What we basically did to start our work was, um, we, we have a list of guiding questions, which you can see on the task force overview page. About a dozen or so per, per group. And we started by, uh, listing those questions and then trying to put them into categories. And they actually fell into categories pretty nicely, um, from early on. And we started with our four, um, four groups. And those groups are safety in the live environment, virtual instruction, equity, and meeting the social emotional needs and building connection and community for students. So those groups, um, have been meeting together multiple times a week for the last several weeks. And then also meeting, um, at least once a week with both Ms. Edwards and myself to, uh, make sure that we can connect and see where the groups are doing overlapping work where they need input from each other. Certainly we have been meeting, uh, every time something new comes out for us from, um, from PDE the other day. Or as most recently as 4:45 this afternoon, when we got new guidance to kind of pull everybody together. And, and that's why I think what Dr. Harner shared about the fluid, the fluidity of this and, and the expectations are really important because we are listening to all of the information that we get, both from the state, from local entities, and of course from our survey results to inform our work. So we had over, um, 90 participants and those came from teachers, administrators, board staff. On one of the committees, we had some parent support. So we have had a, a great response to this work. And I'm going to, um, now share, um, the, the slides here with a member from, um, one of the co-chairs from each of the groups so that they could give you just a brief overview of the work that they are doing. But their work is also linked on, on the previous slide that I was just on, if you'd like to see a little bit more in-depth. Um, one, we told them one page and most of them went for one page front and back, even though it's virtual. So they're a little longer than one page, but that's there for you. So, um, first I'll kick it over to the safety in the live environment work group and let them share a brief update for you.
There, Michael?
I am. I'm trying to start my video, but it's not allowing me. I don't know if that, there's a setting, um, from the host, Joe, if you need to do it. But, um, I can, if you can hear me, I will start, um, uh, and, uh, hello and, and thank you, uh, thank you, everyone. And, uh, as Zach just chimed in, he and I are, are co-chairing. Now I can start my video. Now you can see me. Um, Zach and I are co-chairing the task force safety in a, in a live environment. And I'm just going to briefly share, I guess, with you, the, the setup, our, our goals, our driving questions, if you will, and, uh, an overview of what we've been doing, discussing and analyzing to date. And, uh, and Zach, please, uh, Zach will help me fill in the gaps and, and also speak to, uh, next steps, questions and direction as well. So overall, for, for this task force, safety in a live environment, our, our goal and specific focus for this task force is, is just what, what it says. It's to plan and prepare for coming to school in the safest, uh, environment. And that's utilizing CDC and PDE guidelines and recommendations. And now also as Dr. Hoffman shared, uh, considering, uh, um, the, uh, the, the county's recommendations. Because of, you know, because of the nature of our task force and dealing with safety. Because of the nature of our task force and dealing with safety for students, for staff, and for community, we've broken our work down into six subcommittees, which you can see on the screen. While there's some overlap, you know, each subcommittee has a really narrow focus, which you can see. But our groups consist of representation of level, people from all levels and stakeholders, parents, administrators, teachers, educational assistants, facilities, HR, school nurse. And additionally, we have, we've also been working with consultants from outside and representatives from St. Luke's and Schrader Group and Hury Engineering. To see the specific individuals who comprise our task force, you can take a look at the one-page, one-page link. And as shared today, in the last three to four weeks, we've met a number of times and continue to revise and adjust our analysis and then plans and direction based on CDC, PDE's preliminary guidance, and PDE's phased school reopening of health and safety plan. And then again, just as, you know, which I saw at about 5:15 tonight, which is again, a pretty significant difference in what is recommended from the county. I'm going to pause here, and Zach, I'll ask you if you want to touch base on our next steps and direction.
Yep. So just to give you a little insight into what we've been doing, we started taking the guidance from PDE. And as Nancy Anne stated, we were thrown for a little bit of a curveball today because the new guidance that we've got from the local county health officials is a little different. So we've got to digest that still. But we did take a cautious approach, the most safe approach to our work. And some of the things that we found out, you know, through that work is using the six-foot guidelines. And a quick thank you to Schrader Group, who's been volunteering their time for free and allowing us. I mean, we're throwing all kinds of things at them that they're using their CAD software to help us, you know, build these models out. And you can see a few in here. We could fit about 50 to 60% of our students into a school at any given time using that six-foot, you know, social distancing number. Busing, we can only get about 12 students on a bus. So that's the six-foot to the T, you know, numbers. So we then looked at the yellow versus green phases. We didn't spend much time on yellow because we found out pretty quickly that's the most strict, you know, guidance that we have right now due to capacity, practicality, and costs. That would be very difficult to open up in a live environment. So then we switched pretty quickly to the green phase. And we do think that we could open a live environment with some restrictions on the number of students we have in there, started looking at a hybrid staggered model. And we've been doing everything. We have pretty strong plans in place already for our cleaning and sanitizing using our grant funds. And you'll see on the board meeting later tonight, there's a proposal to purchase sanitizer stations for every classroom. We started developing plans for feeding students in the classroom, you know, plans for grab-and-go stations, all cold meals, things like that, where we don't have students congregating. Working on some guidance for staff who might have questions about what school will look like when we return and their own personal, you know, concerns and working through that. So our, you know, our next steps are really to dive deep into the template that PD put out there and start putting our draft plans together. And we hope to have something for the board to look at on June 25th. We still have quite a few questions, quite a few unknowns, quite a few heavy lifts that, you know, we're still working through. And you'll notice that those are on the bottom of our one-page slash four-page document that we put together. So when you get in there, take a look at some of those questions that we have posted for you, for you to review.
Thank you, Zach and Michael. And we're going to move on to the Virtual Instruction Task Group, which will be up next.
Good evening. I don't know if we can access the video. See? Almost. Chad Evans and I are co-chairing this group. We do have a good makeup of our task force where we have all levels represented with teachers and administrators. So we have different perspectives. Everything that we do and when we address all of the guiding questions that are linked on that previous slide, we look through three different lenses. So we're looking through the perspective of the learner, the student as the learner. We're certainly considering the parent or the family and also the teacher's perspective. So when, again, when we're looking at those guiding questions, we focused on instructional delivery, data and resources, organization of the virtual schedule. We certainly started it more as describing what virtual instruction looks like. But we are quickly really focusing more on what a fluid learning experience could look like for students, knowing that there could be different ways that we're starting at any time. We could potentially be going from live to virtual if that were the case, if something were to happen. So we're really trying to ensure that high-quality, fluid experience for students. Some of the things we were looking at with instructional delivery is certainly synchronous and asynchronous, making recommendations depending on the age of students, looking at what kind of data we would use in terms of grading or assessments, and really just crafting that schedule. And Chad's going to share a little more about some details.
Thank you, Nicole. So we have the one-pager link there, and we would encourage you to take a look at some of the conversations that we've arrived at, or at least have been spending time sharing. And as Nicole mentioned, we want to make sure that if we are moving into a virtual environment at any point in the year, or we're providing virtual supports for our kids, that it's the highest quality that we possibly can offer our kids. And so we know that our role is to find ways to support both students and teachers and families who are in a virtual environment in the fall in both live and virtual instructional opportunities. We talked about the need for grading in the fall as being a part of our process, but also ensuring that feedback is the real focus for our kids. And that's how we know they're going to grow. And then really, we have a couple of questions that we keep coming back to. One of those is, how do we, we know that our teachers do a tremendous job in the classroom themselves under normal circumstances, but there are going to be some changes. And so how do we start to shift our thinking, not just from the virtual instruction, but also to what might those changes look like in a face-to-face environment as well? We know that a lot of what we are going to do moving forward as a task force is in creating resources and supports for our teachers, our families, and our students as they return in the fall, in whatever format they are.
Thank you very much, Chad and Nicole. And next, we have our Equity Task Force Groups.
All right. Hi, everyone. So I'm going to get started. Again, I'm having the same camera problem. My name is Carrie Stifiri. For those that aren't too familiar with me, I am the supervisor of Special Education, there we go, for grades K through six, and a former special education teacher in the district. So when we looked, Adam and Schmucker and I are the ones that are leading this task force. When we looked at Equity, we first thought it important. So you can see our task force makeup. We wanted to get a wide variety of people with different perspectives, but that all came from a place of trying to be fair and equitable in their practices. We did divide into eight subcommittees based upon the barriers that we had identified. And so that was really the start of our work, was to talk about what barriers do our students have. And it went everything, so our one-pager does list all of them, but things in terms of race, language, both for students that speak a language other than English, but also for students who are nonverbal, students that may have a varied home life situation, maybe going between homes, or that do have a lower socioeconomic status and might not have access to resources, as well as disability and some other barriers that we identified. So in our subgroups, we kind of had some guiding questions. So what does it look like to not have access to resources and manipulatives at home? What does it look like to not have language and to not be able to interact with your teachers and only do so through a virtual setting? What does it look like, you know, when I don't speak English as my native language? Or families don't speak English as their native language? So how are we communicating with them? How are we keeping them apprised of the changes and recommendations we're making? And then certainly talking about home life and the way that, you know, our students get a lot of support in school. And so when we go to being socially distant, how can we continue to support working parents, kids that need support as well, just in getting their work done, logging in? And technology is a big part of our work as well. I'm just going to pass it over to Adam, who's going to talk a little bit about our recommendations.
Thanks, Carrie. Yes. And so as Carrie said, we had used a lot of the guiding questions to help us get to address some of the barriers for Equity and equitable access to quicker down to education. Some of the things we've talked about, what may seem small but is significant is access to materials. Some students have different levels of access to materials at home. So providing, you know, grab bags of materials, pencils, colored construction paper, scissors, what have you, things that are important for students, especially at the elementary level, providing those. We certainly talked about the great work that Joe and the technology team did this spring with technology and how essential that will be to continue to support and provide equitable access to technology for families and students. Professional development will be ongoing as it always is for teachers, but especially in this area to what some of the barriers that Carrie spoke of, professional development in the areas of language acquisition, implicit bias, culturally responsive classrooms, et cetera. And also, if we have to be in a virtual or hybrid model, the potential for live support for students at some time. So that may be something in the area of office hours, where a student who may be virtual can, again, following the guidelines that are required by the Commonwealth, get access to a teacher for a live instruction check-in at some point. And then, of course, also just making sure we are adjusting our program with fluidity, in a fluid way, so that we are always making sure to support equal access for some of our neatest students and some of those students in our specialized programs that have the greatest educational needs.
Thank you so much, Carrie and Adam. And our final work group is the group that focused on meeting social emotional needs and also building community with their students.
Hi, good evening. My name's Kelly Kramer. I am an OTL instructional coach. I'm not sure if my video is on quite yet. There we go. Good evening again. Co-chair Kim Finerty and I are proud of the diversity represented as far as our task force work, the number of teachers, nurses, guidance counselors, coaches that joined us in our work, and the number of voices that are represented. Our core belief driving our work is that we believe the heart of all learning is grounded in connection, community, and relationship building. We are approaching our work through the perspectives of students, staff, and families. We are considering the likely stressors that many have experienced as a result of COVID-19 and the likely stressors that many will continue to experience as we plan as a task force group. Our group is in the process of making recommendations and providing supports in relation to the three focus areas of social, emotional learning, mental health and wellness, and building connections and community. Kim Finerty is now going to share with you our task force next steps. Kim?
Okay. I'm not sure that my, oh, here we go. Start my video. Our next steps are really to construct a reentry plan focused on social, emotional learning, mental health and wellness, and building relationships, as Kelly just shared. The next thing we need to do is build supportive learning environments where all students and staff can enhance and develop their social and emotional competencies, feel a sense of belonging, heal and thrive. We need to create a virtual pathway for students, staff, and families to access and connect with mental health supports. And we need to reinforce the importance of collaboration and ongoing relevant professional development for our staff. All of these steps can be done in a virtual or a live environment. And that's the best thing about our subgroup. And I'll hand it back to Dr. Hoffman.
Thank you so much, Kim and Kelly, for your work as well. So I hope that you got a little bit of a glimpse at all of the work that these groups have been doing over the last few weeks. And certainly, I know that you heard that we have been thrown quite a few per calls, but know that we continue to keep the best interest of our students, staff, and community in mind when we are making these decisions. I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Harner, I believe, to go over the draft conceptual models, or possibly Ms. Edwards, sorry.
Thank you, Dr. Hoffman. Briefly, I wanted to put on a screen some of the things that we want to have in our model. And now that you've listened to the four work groups, you've read or at least scanned the parent and the teacher, faculty, and staff surveys and know a little bit about CDC guidance, PDE guidance, and local guidance. I wanted to get you all into a conversation about what your expectations are individually. And so then we can move forward and bring you back a conceptual framework that is a lot more concise. And that we can then go out in our next step after we bring that to you in two weeks is then register parents for where they would like to have their students in a virtual environment, in a hybrid environment, or in a classroom environment full-time. Also, a big one for us is transportation. Because if you go on the links, you'll see what the modeling our work groups have done, have looked at what it looks like for six-foot distancing on a bus and how limited transportation, limited assets we have right now. And we would, to run a follow-up schedule and a follow-up model of kids in school with six-foot distancing in buses, we would probably have to have two and a half times the buses we have right now. So there's a lot of different things out there. And I really would like to get the board, Ms. Mitchell, to get the board to have this conversation so that they've heard what we're looking at. Again, there are also our work groups have, the leaders of the work groups just recently, right around 4:45 this afternoon, after I got out of my county meeting at 4:35, they got the new fluid expectations from the county. So we're all ears.
I'll open it up to the board.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for looking at all these various options. I think, I mean, looking at the bullets here, it seems that's a pretty broad menu. And I guess I would tend to go for plan for physical presence, the whole night at Valley, you know, that aside, because we'll work on, but in general, I would tend to, this looks like you're giving too many options. And it looks too complicated. So I would tend to think positive, be able to plan for this. If you have to roll out some mitigating, for some mitigating strategies, fine. But I would try to focus on, no, let's go back to physical. And just that's the option. But no, you've got plans for hybrid and virtual. But this looks too complicated.
I agree with John. I would like to see the kids back in school. And I believe, you know, actually attended or read through a meeting that happened out in central Pennsylvania earlier this week because I did want to see how the districts in Green are dealing with this now in the hopes that we would be in Green by the time the start of school came up. And, you know, some of the comments that I got there were they were going to limit their class sizes to 25 or below. I mean, we're talking way more limitations than that, being six-foot apart. We would only fit, you know, 11 or 12 people per classroom. So, you know, if we could fit 25 per classroom, that's a much more manageable number. You know, there's going to be guidelines that we can meet, and there's going to be some that we can't meet. You know, we simply cannot bus every one of our students to school if they need to be bussed with the social distancing the way it is. And we can't just go ahead and order double the amount of buses. You know, if every school district in Pennsylvania placed an order for that many buses at the same You know, if every school district in Pennsylvania placed an order for that many buses at the same time, there's no way they'd be able to manufacture even that many. So, you know, there is going to be some of these guidelines, and that's what I guess we have to stick with. None of these are requirements. These are all guidelines. You know, I would say most of these are not requirements, they're guidelines. So I believe there is definitely some wiggle room in these, and, you know, and I applaud Dr. Zacken and Zach for at least, you know, the first part of this, they're really dealing with, you know, the facilities, the constraints that we could see in the worst-case scenario, you know. But I think our plans are going to be a lot less than the worst-case scenario, hopefully by August 30th, or the first day of school.
Yes, one point of order, can we stop screen share so we can see bigger faces? Thank you. It feels a little weird. The bigger issue, or the issue for me, I should say, is the impact it's going to have on the students and the families. I mean, you've mentioned it a few, a little while ago about when we were talking about nighting and the impact that just three or four weeks would have. If we're going into a model where we're doing more than just nighting virtually, or God forbid, we have to do a hybrid model, which then throws everything into a, I think, I really worry about the impact that that's going to have on their ability to learn and the parents' ability to go back to work and carry on a, you know, a career while they're trying to third grader or whatever it might be.
I mean, if we look at the parent surveys, parent and teacher, the student surveys, then we all have to acknowledge the fact that we have a split community on thinking. However, as was mentioned earlier, we have a discussion earlier about nighting. You know, we were talking about three weeks of possibly learning virtual. And Keith rightly mentioned that that would have an impact on those families, and we need to consider that. And as everybody has just, you know, Brian just said so, and everybody else has also said. The impact on a learning environment at 50% capacity, because let's be honest, that's what the administration just presented to us. The statement that the guidelines were to, would put us, even a green, would put us at a 50% capacity if we followed all the guidelines that were included. And I agree with everybody else who's said as much, it's just not something we can do. There are a lot of steps we can take to provide sanitization, to show that we're making an effort to keep things as clean as possible, to prevent the spread of anything to the greatest extent that we have possible. But the idea that we'd have school one day for half the kids and another day for another half the kids, or however, however the administration was planning on doing a hybrid model, it's just not sustainable. You know, anything in my mind, I'm speaking personally here, anything less than everybody going back to school on the first day of school the way we did last year with some reasonable precautions, I don't think it's feasible for this district.
Yeah, I agree.
So, this is Keith, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
All right. So, you know, I think it's, you know, we're in a unique situation and one that I think is going to constantly change. And so I think the discussion we have today may look a lot different in a month from now, and they look a lot different in two months from now. And so the way I kind of, in my mind, have it pictured is if you have school at the top, and then you have two separate arms coming down on either side, you have sort of this virtual hybrid, and then you have in-class learning. And, you know, it begs the question, I think this pandemic has taught, you know, sort of the community and more importantly, you know, sort of the states and, say, the federal government and everybody involved is that we're making adaptations and learning how to work differently in all aspects. So I think about it from a healthcare perspective and how telemedicine has really come into vogue. We've known it's worked for years, but it just seems like it's much more, we had much more success with it now. And so, you know, it begs the question in the future, you know, is a hybrid model or a virtual model and an in-school model equitable? Do kids learn equally? Will they, you know, and I don't think we'll have any of that data for years to know whether or not one's better than the other. But the other thing that I think about is really the supportive home. And, you know, the, I mean, everybody that you talk to as a parent sort of became sort of this surrogate instructor at times where they were helping their kids learn. And so we know that there's going to be that that exists in our community. And then more importantly, it's going to be for the people who don't have that, for the kids that don't have that kind of support at home where the parents aren't able to, to fill in that gap that exists in a virtual way. And so I think about it as, could you have both? And would that then take care of, in the long run, sort of this balance that you need both with busing and in-classroom and the spacing that exists? It begs the question in the future, you know, could you, in five years from now, and John, you've mentioned it, you know, could you get rid of some of the costs associated with having buildings if you have a group that has a virtual capacity to learn? And we know that the classroom, that the students learning, and I really, I don't know, we'll have those answers as we debate this over the next, you know, couple of weeks. But it's something to think about in the future, at least in my mind. And I think we have to, I think this pandemic will force us to get creative. And it sounds like to the administration, I love the presentation, and I loved what you guys were looking at and gave us, you know, sort of that very in-depth picture. But in my mind, I think it's just about getting creative and innovative of new ways of doing things. And maybe we're just stuck in the old way, and maybe what we'll find is that the old way was the best way, I don't know. But that's just my two cents.
That was good. Yeah, it's like necessity is the mother of invention sometimes.
I think that a lot of what Mr. McCucci was talking about is what we were exploring in our conceptual model, giving parents, in turn, the students, the option about their relatives, their concern, and their interpretation of the environment that we're in, in this new environment, and that we flex as a district in our paradigm where what Mr. Spear has been talking about in some of his emails over the last couple of weeks about making sure we have that option, that virtual option for parents who are concerned about their children, if they're wearing masks or not wearing masks, or they don't want to be around a whole bunch of children yet because of issues at home. So they have that option, and that we do all the health and safety precautions in the buildings that were required to by law or CDC and the county. And I think that's what we were talking about in the model. Prior to the discussion earlier today, or the discussion I had with the superintendents today, Dr. Damsker, the county health director, if you've been reading, you know, Chris talked about what was going on in Williamsport probably, or somewhere out in central Pennsylvania, other districts like East Penn is only 25% of the, what they presented this week or earlier this week, only 25% of the students are going to be in the building at any one time. And we're talking, we're thinking, here, about up to one-third of our parents won't want it, don't want to come have their children back in school. And if that's the case, then we have to, or should, with your support, provide that alternative to them.
Well, the actual, the two choices, it said not comfortable, less than 12% said not comfortable. So the actual answer is to, no, I'm not comfortable for whatever reasons. That was actually less than 12%. So, yeah, I mean, this is not trying to make a one-size-fits-all, but.
Mitch, do you have a comment? I think, not to cut you off, John.
I was going to say, I've heard from a number of teachers and parents that the kids consider that their online work optional, and many, I hear that many of them aren't even doing it. And I don't know how that's going to work in the future if we try and make that a regular part of it.
Well, one of the things about the online, one of the things about the online learning that we were experiencing this quarter actually is that it was optional. So the kids knew that going in. So if we go to a model in the fall where the online learning is mandatory, then that kind of addresses that situation, Mitch, but.
But if you still have kids trying to do it on their own, that's a problem, I think.
Correct, correct.
Well, and that's my point, was you have to, you have to, I mean, there's another, there's another whole side of this, and that is the standard in which we're held to as far as, you know, testing and accountability to standardized test scores and things along those lines. Well, do they just go away? What happens if we find kids are struggling with the way they are? They're not learning, what if our numbers go completely out of whack? And, you know, those are the things I worry about because this is sort of a, you know, unfortunately, this is a randomized controlled trial, and the outcome of which we don't know. We don't know how well they did the last three months, do we? Do we have any data that would say our kids were, are smarter today, having done it virtually? And that's, that's my only worry is without great home support, that that virtual model could fail kids. And unfortunately, we're still accountable to that, right? They haven't lifted those regulations and say, well, we're not.
One issue I would raise is the, I guess, I'm not sure why the virtual learning environment that we're going to go into in the fall, if, you know, by providing some form of virtual learning for those who choose it, is any different than our cyber program? I'm a little confused on that. Perhaps we don't offer every class in our entire resume in the cyber program. But perhaps that should be something that the administration is considering because the cyber program we've offered for several years now, several students have been taking advantage of that. Those students were getting tested and graded and meeting all their PDE requirements. We were doing this all in a cyber program that already existed. And if we're going to go into the fall and several students and families choose not to, or take of our in-class learning, can't they just be considered cyber students? And we teach them in the existing and established cyber program? Can you shed any light on that?
Those kids are in an environment in the district office, are they not, the cyber school? Are you talking?
Some are, some aren't, sir.
Okay.
We use that, we use the cyber model, online model for a lot of our students at the academy. And then we have students, instead of going off to a charter, cyber charter school, we request parents to consider using our cyber program.
Okay.
But part of, part of that is, an important part of that is we have an understanding and agreement that with all of our cyber work, our association, our teachers have the option of taking on that work. So then that becomes a different, in the short term, in the small numbers that we currently have, have had in the cyber program, that was not a large number, 10%, 12% that John's talking about, I think it's going to be higher than what John was talking about, but that's, is figure on the extreme of our question. That's, that, it takes a lot away, a lot of our own student work, so that has to be, our teacher work, excuse me, teacher work.
Now, Dr. Hoffman and Dr. Harner, a question for you two would be, is the cyber program aligned with our current brick and mortar curriculum? So if the kids would say start out in our cyber program, would they have an easier transition back to our classrooms if, say, you know, half the year goes by and this COVID thing really starts to die down? Or if next year they want to come back to the brick and mortar schools? By choosing our cyber as opposed to a cyber charter, will they, will they stay in line with their, with the current curriculum path?
Well, the core courses are definitely aligned with grade-level curriculum. But I'll let Dr. Hoffman and if Jamie Madden, who runs our program for us, besides the academy, she's on here, so might be able to help out. Lisa, would you?
So I think, first of all, it's really important to differentiate the two things. So the students who do online work through the academy are not cyber students. We just utilize an online program to help support them through their work for a variety of different reasons. We also have a small number of students in the district who do take part in cyber instruction, though we mostly use a third-party provider for that because a few years ago, as a cost-saving measure, we did stop our district cyber program. So if you are looking at the number of students who we currently have in cyber, we have a memorandum of understanding with our union, as Dr. Harner mentioned, where we first ask teachers if they would like to teach those classes. And there are specific rules surrounding that, in which case they would be a little bit tighter aligned in terms of, you know, being fluid to move in and out. But for the last two years, the majority of our classes have been, as I said, taught by third-party providers when a teacher in district was not interested in teaching those classes. So if we were to have an influx of students who wanted to take cyber classes, we would certainly need to look at that because we do not currently have a model that would support being able to staff that number of students.
Is there a way we could livestream the in-person instruction from the, from the teachers that will be teaching in the classrooms or even video, videotape, you know, video record and have that available for students that would be in an online environment?
On purchasing supplies and then also making sure that, you know, it works within our agreements with our teachers as well.
One of the things, Chris, that we're looking at is that teachers are assigned, if the, right now, the county's limitation is not six feet, it's three feet, which is where we can get 25 in a classroom. That means that the teachers will have two students in two different environments, one teacher, two different environments. They could tape or have the video of what's going on. The challenge for all of our teachers who are doing that is that they have two different environments and they're tracking what's in front of them in there, and that requires, that's a lot more work. And I've had conversations with the association leadership, the president, with Ryan and Chris Diley, the vice president, Brian Lee, and they emphasize their concern about having that responsibility. So within the school day, do we shorten the school day? That's one thing, so they have more time to do the preparatory work, the follow-up work with both students that are at home and they're in the classroom. So I'm setting the stage, trying to set the stage for your thinking of what Keith's saying out of the box, different, delivering things differently, that we have different time elements in front of the classroom, and we provide teachers time to meet with those students that are in a virtual environment or to work with them asynchronously in and out there. So they have 25, 20 in the class, five at home.
The question I have, how many of you have ever taken a class cyber? Because I have, and I have not found them very engaging at all. They're generally dreadfully dull. And I don't know if that's the case here or not, but I wonder.
Well, as Chris shared with the board, or Gary, Gary's here with the board, and then Chris followed up with an email about it, about how the performance of our statewide charter school opportunities, there's 14 cyber schools in the state, and all of them are dreadful when it comes to academic achievement on standardized test scores. All of them are dreadful. Now, in our experience, in my experience being a superintendent in the state for 11 years, or more than that now, the students who generally go off to the cyber model, they have had issues with troiancy, performance, or they went, parents need flexibility, and they're on the road all the time. And, but their PSSA scores and their Keystone scores rank them in the bottom of the state, bottom 5%. If we're offering it, obviously, we don't, we, when we offer a cyber program, you get our guidance counselors, you get our. you get our guidance counselors, you get our administrators, you get all the support you have and and local access to athletics here.
And school too. On our program, you would get tech school as well, correct?
Yes, sir.
That would be something you want.
Yes. And if you're in a, if you are in a cyber school, you do not have tech school access. At just cyber charter act school, you don't have tech school access.
The Quakertown Charter or Quakertown Cyber, whoa, we're really missing the words here. Quakertown Cyber, you would have access, but the cyber charters, you would not. Is that the way?
Correct.
Okay.
So it sounds like, um, thank you all for your commentary, and I just want to thank the administration for really taking the time to go through this because it's very tricky. And they have been working their tails off, in case anyone didn't know that. They have. They care about our students. They're looking at all these scenarios. They get this guidance and then it changes. It's a constantly changing situation. So I do want to thank you all in the administration for doing your best to come up with these proposals. This is really not easy stuff, especially for you guys. It sounds like the the board, the majority of the board is is really saying that we want to see our kids back in in schools. And and I I hear that loud and clear. We have to do it safe. We have to do it smart. I think about the detriment of those kids. As a parent personally, I can say that it's it's been difficult. I don't feel like my kids get the same experience at home. And for those parents who don't have flexibility when it comes to their jobs, their kids are suffering. And so I want you guys to think about this, and I thought about this quite long and hard. If our students are not in a physical classroom and their parents are working, their kids are, those kids are going to have to go somewhere. So it might not be in our schools, but it's going to be in some other facility. They're going to have to be learning someplace. And so that sort of begs the challenge, why not us? Why not us? Why aren't, why won't we be the ones to provide that education for our students? So it it sounds, you know, it's it's not going to be easy. I think for for any of us going into this, I I really want us to, you know, try to try our best to to do what's best for our community and our students when it comes to learning. And I really hope that we find we have some, we get lucky in some kind of balance where you have certain group of people who feel uncomfortable, maybe they have immunocompromised relatives, and they just want to have a virtual environment. We balance that with the kids who do want to return to the schools. And then maybe our classrooms will be a little bit lighter. As far as transportation, you know, I'm a I'm the parent that's saying, you know what? I may not utilize the buses. If I if if you're a parent who may be able to find some other transportation methods, then maybe use those transportation methods so that way we keep our buses a little bit lighter. I think it's going to take all of us as a community to come together and really do our best to try and and figure this out. And like I said, the guidance is changing all the time, and we got guidance from this one, that one. And, you know, some of this may be out of our hands, and that's the other part of this. I really hope that it boils down to allowing us to have it, these decisions being made at a local level because we know our community best. But quite frankly, it may be out of our hands. So so say, all that being said, I think that the administration feels pretty confident, hopefully, and and where the board stands on this, and we can continue to solidify these plans. We do have one more board meeting later in the month. Any other comments or questions?
What we, just a last comment, we plan on bringing you our health, health and safety plan. Hopefully, by the end of the month, no later than the first meeting in in August. And also on the, they say requirement that we have to have for you by the end of the month, or an expectation, not a requirement, is we have a health and safety plan. It's a subset of that for athletics because PIAA and the PDE has has given their broad guidance out on that. And we have to have have a plan before our, any of our teams or any of our activities like marching band gets back on the field. We have to have the plan approved by the board. You have to approve a plan before we get involved in athletics and marching band.
So are are the students going to be able to do athletics then, from what I'm hearing you say?
It is.
Dr. Harner.
Yes, ma'am. I expect it in a small, in a small way in the beginning, and then gradually, I I see greater limitations in the future for football, especially for crowd participation. We don't have 250 spectators for soccer, girls' soccer, boys' soccer. I don't believe in any one time unless we get into championships and in the playoffs, but that that and then you have tennis, you don't, you may get, I've been out there, you may get 15 people at tennis courts. But are probably my biggest concern in the fall is is girls' volleyball. And then the big, the number one sport of the transmission is going, that could happen is in wrestling. That's if there's been a lot of that out there in the last two months in 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 the NCAA ranked discussions and also in the high school ranked discussions. So I don't, I'm going to wait for for that to come out, but we can start practicing. And so we need to have a plan for that, and we will have that before you at the end of the month for approval or discussion.
Do you agree?
Hopefully.
If the green levels are just guidance, I guess my question for football is, can't you just open it up to anybody who wants to show up? And they would know that the understanding is if you're coming there, you're coming there at your own choice. We are freely allowing anybody who wants to come and watch a football game. Is it our job to limit it to 250 if it's just the guidance?
Yeah, thank you.
I think that's going to be left to be. We, I think we'll find more as we go. I'm hoping it it does come down to our decision as a district. Like I said, I feel like we know our district best.
Well, and we don't know what's going to happen in the fall, not to be Debbie Downer, but, you know, Keith can jump in here. I work with a lot of doctors, and some are telling me we're going to have another wave of COVID coming in the fall.
And that and that's true. I mean, Keith, you can, you can comment on this if you want. The biggest thing that I think that we need to all think about is, as far as isn't going away, how long are we going to live our lives locked down where we're not continuing? We have to be careful. I understand that. But just how long? If we get a vaccine, if that vaccine is 30% effective, if this goes on for years, are we willing to do that? So Keith, I don't know if you had a comment that you wanted to share.
Yeah, no, I think I think what we're asking for is predictability, and right now we have none, right? You know, if you look at the grass, the grass are are showing a decline. You know, when we started this pandemic, it was the flatten the curve to allow the healthcare system to sort of stabilize. And we did that to some extent, and and now we're past it. But the question is, you know, with the, you know, in life, how do we, how do we move forward? Because you're 100% right. We don't suspect it's going away. Although it's SARS-1, you know, it did go away. It didn't do the damage it did that SARS-2 is doing, but, you know, so it's it's really difficult. And I I think if anybody had a crystal ball, we'd be in much better shape. But I think suffice to say, I think we need to start learning how to work within it and understand the risks and how to protect yourselves. And and then you have to continue on. And look, this is near and dear to my heart. I I lost one of my coworkers two weeks ago to COVID. So I think long and hard about this each and every day. And so, but I I definitely feel that that you're right, we can't stay locked down forever, and we need to see what happens.
All right. Thanks for sharing. I'm so sorry about your coworker. I remember about that. This is definitely a serious thing. We don't take it lightly. But I think that we've had, we've had a good discussion. So if you guys are good with it, I'd like to go ahead and move on to the standing committee reports. Is that okay with everyone?
Thank you very much, ma'am, for leading that. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Onward.
Onward. Okay, so we have Mr. Anderson. Tell us about your education and curriculum committee today.
I was not there.
Oh, sorry about that. Well, then, if somebody else in that committee could share.
Yeah, I mean, Dr. Hoffman. Basically, they they presented a handful of just kind of updates on what they've been doing with the curriculum cycle books, I think. I don't know if you have anything specific, Dr. Hoffman, but there was a a motion, if I recall, and I apologize if you if you emailed me something, but there was a, let me check it, let me get the right wording.
Dr. Hoffman, why don't you help him out and take him through the five, five items?
All right, I'm happy to do that. So we first had a some textbooks for review that we previously brought to the committee, but to do the closure, we never actually got them formally board approved. So I put them back on the agenda in case anybody wanted to look at them one more time. And then we're asking for approval of those at the next meeting. We actually actually gave an update on our budget that we are coming in about $350,000 that we had originally proposed due to some cuts of what we deem to be nonessential curriculum items. We shared what what Mr. Kern was just talking about, which is a motion, which is a little bit further on the agenda for all of you to review. And I'll just read it to you, and then we can talk about it briefly. So it says, for the 2020, 2021 school year only, senior students may enroll in fewer than five credits, provided they can meet the outlined graduation requirements. So the purpose of that and the conversation was that in an effort to to have fewer students at the high school, to allow some flexibility to students, given the situation that if students are able to meet our graduation requirements as seniors, that they only need to come to school or virtual, whatever the environment is, to take the classes that they need. Currently, even if they only need, let's say, two classes to graduate, we ask them to schedule five to be fully scheduled. So this would be a one-year reprieve of that, allowing them only to enroll in the classes that they need. Of course, provided they are they're meeting our requirements. And then lastly, we had two quick updates, new information. We shared that we have met the goal of updating Atlas and are ready to share that out with the public. Our teachers have had access to it, but we have not really used it in in all of our groups. But we are doing that.
That's the, and that's the curriculum mapping tool.
Right, so that.
Not actually an atlas.
Yeah, sorry.
It's not the person.
Thank you. So that provides both our teachers and our community members and parents with transparent look at our curriculum and standards in every grade level and core subject so that they can and look at that and see what their students should know and be able to do in each of those courses at every grade level. So we're really excited about that work and hope that teachers and parents find it valuable. And then lastly, a presentation of the Summer Choice Board website, which is live now and being shared this week and next by principals and classroom teachers with students. And it just shares both required summer work in some areas, you know, for students who may be taking honors level or AP classes. They have required summer readings and then also optional activities for students from everything from Lego challenges to core content that teachers put together to help students with activities over the summer.
Yeah, I I noticed after Aaron shared that, I I was looking, and there wasn't any like beach, beach read. There weren't any like fluff. Yeah. But it was good.
Great. All right. Yeah, we had early release back when I was in high school. That's pretty awesome. I think that's a, I actually went to college half-time, half the day in high school, half the day when I was a a senior, so. So kudos to you guys for offering that. I'm sure a lot of seniors are going to appreciate you for that. We're going to move on to the Ed Foundation. Mr. Jackson, do you have a report for us?
I do. The the Ed Foundation met virtually yesterday morning. As a, an organization that relies on the donations of the business community, needless to say, we haven't experienced a large influx of donations in the past few months, which is fine because even that school is really, has been also in a virtual setting. We haven't given out many, many grants in the past few months. There was a decision not to go ahead with the artist residence as we had in the past few years. We had separated the artist residence into topics, theater, audio, video, the mediums, art and music. And dance was slated for the spring, and the unknown COVID situation suggested that dance might not be the kind of activity they wanted to highlight in that. Although, having listened to the discussion from the board regarding the desire to get back into the schools, I might let everybody know what the Ed Foundation might want to reconsider, maybe bringing in a teacher. If everybody's on both sides, you're interested in doing that, that's something I might want to report back. We did find that there was a line item in our budget that was set aside for an unknown topic. And we moved that back into the fund balance. That was $17,000 that we now have to dish out somewhere. So that was a good thing. And the Ed Foundation will read again in two months. That's my report.
Super. Thank you. All right, I'm going to skip to president's report because I did mention some of the things that I was going to mention during my report. So I'll move to the fiscal agenda, and the first item on that agenda is the roll call vote to approve the final budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021 as presented. So I'll need a motion for that.
So moved.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Does the administration want to give the highlights?
Mr. Shock, I'll let you do that.
Yeah, I mean, nothing has really changed dramatically since the proposed final budget. There is a reduction in the expenditure line item due to the attritional savings that we have seen over the last couple of weeks. We are looking at a deficit of a little over 7.2 million. Of that 7.2 million, just a reminder, about 2 million is is again the use of the proceeds from selling the schools. So when I, when I talk about a structural deficit, we're looking at a $5.2 million structural deficit. I would say more than half of that is is driven by the reductions in revenues that we are projecting for for next year. So what we're we're continuing to do is is plan on strategies to reduce our spend, which we've talked a lot about over the last couple of finance meetings. So we we expect that, you know, obviously, there's a lot of variables involved, and we don't know what the economy and the recovery is going to look like over the next 12 to 18 months. But we expect to be able to reduce that deficit, which is just a paper deficit at this point, you know, by the end of next school year. So that is where we stand right now.
So we are still at 0% for increase, and we're at 119 million or so?
I'm I'm sorry?
119 million total, something like that?
120, close.
The expenditures?
Yeah, the total budget.
Yeah, so it's 118, 872. You're going to see 120 in there because of the budgetary reserve, which we're recommending is increased from 800,000 to 1.2 million. Just to remind the board, we don't ever intend on spending that. It's just sort of a a security blanket that if there's unknown costs that that arise throughout the year, we have additional funds that that are available to spend. And the reason we're recommending that increase is obviously because of the the COVID pandemic. If there's unforeseen costs or some of the grant money doesn't come through, things of that nature. So again, we don't, we don't plan on tapping into that. It's just there as a security blanket. So the actual number is 118, 872, 11.
Okay, thank you.
But then, but then part of that, Zach, just to just to confirm again, is the the, we still have in the budget, all the vacated positions, correct?
Correct. So the recommendation at the time at finance was we don't actually start cutting our budget. So we have, you know, a buffer for our buffer, I guess, if you want to look at it that way. So, you know, we do have the, last time I counted, I want to say five or six FTEs that that we're not planning on backfilling. They're still in the budget. We cut out half of the costs because we replaced them with a teacher at at the starting level on the the pay scale. But again, we don't expect to fill them either. And and in addition to that, we still have those two FTEs that the board allowed us to keep in there above and beyond that. So so again, I I don't foresee us needing to tap into that. It is simply a security blanket for, you know, worst-case scenario contingency planning.
Yeah, so I think I think it suffice to say that 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 we're approving a 0% tax increase.
Yeah, so I think, I think it suffice to say that we're approving a 0% tax increase. However, built into the budget is some, some increased cost. But that is just a theoretical at this point and that the administration was directed to, to watch their spending throughout this next fiscal year. Is that correct to say?
Absolutely, yep.
And so it's built into the budget that if we need it, we could spend it. But at this point, we're asking you to, to be mindful of the fact that we don't want to spend any additional dollars that we don't have to spend until we get some stabilization of the economy and, and understand what we're dealing with in the long term, correct?
Correct. And we have those strategies in there and that has been communicated to all of the department leaders within the district, that strategy as well.
We have a hiring freeze.
Yeah, I think it suffice to say, we're trying to, the freeze is, as I instructed, as I believed it to be, was that only necessity positions would be filled and that the other positions that were vacated were not considered essential at this moment, given the financial deficit that we're facing.
Yes, sir.
Got it. All right, just so we're clear, does the rest of the board understand that?
Yeah, basically, we have like a $1.2 million safety net buffer. I mean, I think the reason behind that is it's really hard to bust your budget, right? So if there's some unexpected expenses like extra cleaning or extra secure sanitation, it's hard to go above the budget, but it's easy to stay beneath it. So there's 1.2 million extra. There's a bunch of FTE positions that we're not planning on filling, also occupying probably a million, I don't know how much, but a lot. So the expectation of
Plus the 2 million. So, so he mentioned 7 million, but it's minus the 2 million, minus the buffer, minus the FTE buffer. So do you understand what we're approving?
Yes.
Yeah, all right.
And the $1.7 million construction contingency that could end up coming back as well, but that would
Correct.
That's one of our, yeah, that's one of our strategies. We, we reworked our capital plan. And really what we did for next year is cut it in half and extended to a six-year plan. But we could even use that contingency if there's money left over to pay for that $500,000 capital projects plan. So part of the strategies that we have to work with.
All right, just so everybody's clear, I want to make sure we're crystal clear on what we're doing.
So ideally, we could come out spending like 116 million, maybe, or something like that at the end of the year.
Correct. The number's going to be lower, Mitch. That's correct.
So, so the goal, yeah, so the goal here, without knowing what our actual revenues are going to be, is, is not to tap into our fund balance by 5.2 million dollars, ignoring the two from the sale of the school, because by law, we have to spend that. So we're hoping at the very least, cutting that in half. But again, time will tell on how our revenues play out with, with the economic recovery.
Yeah, so everybody make sure you, once the local stores start opening, the local business open, get, help get their revenues back up.
That's for sure.
I think it's important that we do recognize that this board went into this budgetary discussion back in January with the idea that we would go for a zero tax increase. We had done the hard work the past few years to get ourselves in the position where we could finally do that. And we were, you know, going forward with letting the administration know we expected a 0% tax increase. And when COVID hit and we began to assess the damage it was doing to our revenues, the projection, we ended up with this budget where we were looking at a $5 million deficit. I'll use that number, not the seven. Yet we chose to stick with a 0% tax increase. And again, I think the community needs to know, not that we're some kind of magnanimous people for sticking with the 0% tax increase, but that this board did the heavy lifting in the past few years to get ourselves in the position where we could do this. I just wanted to, you know, little pat on the back to everybody involved in getting us in this position.
Yeah, I think there's, there's one other point that I think needs to be made. Well, there's two other points. And one is, you know, we've asked a lot of the administration, and I know not only our board, but previous boards have asked a lot of the administration and they've done a really nice job of trying to bring spending into, into a number that's reasonable for the community. And I think the second part is that we recognize that COVID has impacted the community in a way that we've never seen. And so we recognize that any kind of financial burden that we put on them could be significant. And so taking those things into account, I think we were able to come up with this. I say that because the future boards are going to have some tough decisions to be made because this isn't going to last forever. And so we just have to be mindful that in the future, the discussion is going to be difficult.
That's why we get paid the big bucks, right? That's a joke.
You mean zero?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, we're not going to take any pay increases this year either.
Good, that's good. All right, sounds like we got a good discussion here. Anybody else have any final comments before we take a roll call vote? All right, then Anita, would you go ahead and do the roll call?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Geez, okay, we did have a motion. I was saying
Move, yeah.
Did somebody move? I didn't hear. Okay.
Do you want to repeat? I can repeat the motion. The motion to approve the final budget for fiscal year 2020-2021 includes a commitment of fund balance from the general fund for the capital projects for 2020-2021 with the amount to be determined by the administration following completion of the annual audit. Fund balance above 8% of the operating budget will be committed to capital. Mr. Anderson?
Am I saying so moved or am I saying yes?
Yeah, we, I just reread the motion.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Ms. Weed?
Yes.
Mr. McCucci?
Yes.
Mr. Reimers?
Yes.
Mr. Spear?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion approved unanimously.
All right, we're going to move on to the next item. Oh, this is, this is a really, Jeff, do I have to read all this or just recommended action?
No, I wouldn't recommend you read it all. Just say, the motion should be to approve the tax resolution as noted on the agenda.
Great, thank you. So I'm going to recommend that someone make a motion to approve the 2020-2021 tax resolution as presented and there's details in the agenda.
Mr. Jackson will so move.
Mr. Spear will second.
All right, this is also a roll call vote.
Any discussion?
Discussion on this?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Ms. Weed?
Yes.
Mr. McCucci?
Yes.
Mr. Reimers?
Yes.
Mr. Spear?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion approved unanimously.
Ms. Mitchell, may I just comment on one piece of that tax resolution, just so everybody's aware of something?
Sure.
There is still legislation being kicked around that might require school districts to change some of their tax collection dates. PASBO has been fighting very hard on that because time's up, you can't change it this late. The tax collectors have to get their bills out. But I just wanted to make everybody aware that that is still being kicked around, even though time has really expired here. So if there is a legislative change, I will make everybody aware of that, including our tax collectors.
Thank you. And speaking of legislative changes, I did get a chance to speak to Representative Stats. I'm going to be following it up with an email. And one thing that I did ask for is budget flexibility. As you all know, we only get to vote on a budget once a year. And I would like, given the situation for the legislature, legislature to allow school districts to reopen their budgets. And also for the state to remove not only underfunded mandates, we need some clarity around that, but also the requirement for a school district to pay fees to the county tax claim bureau when the district utilizes the services of other entities of collection of delinquent real estate taxes. So there's a number of things that I want us to be engaged with our representatives to try and ease the burden of some of these challenges. So the next item, we're going to approve the May 2020 Boucher and James Bill list. So I'll need a motion for that.
There's a tie. I'll take a second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I wish to abstain.
One abstention? Okay. Now we're going to move to the fiscal consent agenda. On that agenda, we have the approval of CoStar's proposal for hand sanitizer. It's a pretty big expense, guys, so I want you guys to take a look at that.
Can we use it to heat the schools if we don't use it all?
That stuff doesn't go bad, right? So, so take a look at that. We wanted to buy that in advance. We don't want to be behind the curve. The May 2020 budget transfers, the May 2020 bills list. So I'll need a motion to approve the fiscal consent agenda items as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, ma'am. Need a second?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a discussion on this.
It's a lot of hand sanitizer, eh?
Oh, yeah.
It is, but it might help decrease colds, it might help decrease influenza. So we may get a benefit out of this.
Right.
Do we have enough dispensers for all of this hand sanitizer? Or is that going to be another budget item?
No, I already mentioned. Thomas with, I believe, 350 dispensers. But Rob, are you out there?
Yep, yep. They are unlimited, as many as we need, as long as we purchase the sanitizer from that vendor.
Nice. It's like, we'll give you the camera, just buy the film.
Yes, it's like predators.
A lot of people on the call might not know what film means.
Not, well, I do. All righty, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, well, then that motion carries unanimously. Next is the Human Resources Consent Agenda. On here, we have professional staff, support staff, unit pay, substitute aides. I'll need a motion to vote or to adopt the above resolution and approve personal items as recommended.
To move by Mr. Jackson.
I'll second it. Chris Spear.
Thank you. Discussion?
I'd like to talk about, in our hiring tonight is Tony DiCosta, who is the administration is recommending to the school board to be our new head boys' basketball coach. I figured that would be a significant call out to you all. Tony has experience being the head coach for six years at Faith Christian Academy, 2013 through 2019. Last year, he was the assistant coach at, at the college level at the sales. He was a previous head coach before for six years at another high school, Doc Mennonite Academy. He played college ball at Boston University, played professional basketball in Portugal and in Puerto Rico. He hails from New York, but he is a Quakertown parent and works at Univers Bank as an area manager and senior vice president.
Love it.
So it's, he's a quality person and we're looking forward to him taking over the program. And once we get our plan for athletics going, our health and safety plan, I'm sure he's going to get involved with some outside basketball practice.
Very good.
What do you think, Keith?
I, I read the same, same thing you guys did. I mean, I trust that the administration is kind of kids in the best interest and it sounds like he's more than qualified, so.
Do we have outside basketball hoops outside of the elementary schools?
No, sir, but I'm sure he'll find some once we give him the green light.
Yeah, they were, Chris, you believe this, that they were shut down, so you can't play any outside basketball in certain areas. They were, the nets were tied together or boards were put over the rim, so. Can't be outside.
Vitamin D only blocks the virus, but that's all right.
I know, my gosh. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right. The motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. So the next item, it says public comment, but we're going to reserve that till the end. Is that right?
Correct.
I want to make sure. Okay. So Office of Teaching and Learning Consent Agenda, we have approval of an amendment to the graduation requirement section of the 2020-2021 Program of Studies. So that is what we were discussing earlier in regards to the five credits, fewer than five credits, provided they can meet those requirements. Dr. Hoffman mentioned that. So I'll need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion for that.
I'll second that, Mr. Reimers.
All right, any discussion on that?
Was it not always available to students that as long as they met the graduation credit requirements, that they could go to school less than the typical student? Because you always hear students, hear a story about students who, you know, they only, they've gotten taken care of all their requirement classes. So they took two or three electives and then they worked half, half the time. I mean, is that not, is this different than what
The history goes back to 2014 when we first offered it to seniors in the morning or in the afternoon. Then it became just a morning thing. So the administration and the front office didn't have to handle students coming in and going out and all that. But this, there's no academic requirement on there. We said that there's the special, the release from the 3-0, I believe, was in this one, right?
The difference here is that we aren't requiring five credits. So previously, seniors could take five out of seven, which would reduce it by two. We're now saying that if you only need three or four, you could do that as well. So yes, there are some students who previously scheduled five classes instead of seven, but there are still students who may need even less than five credits. So we're giving them that, that option for this one year.
Is it just for this year?
The way that the motion is written and what we discussed at the Ed Committee was to do it for one year. There are potential other implications for whether or not we release students from classes in the future. But we have some leeway this year due to what's coming out about COVID-related issues. So we could certainly look at this in the future to see if we would continue it. But the way that it's written, it is just for this one year.
Given the expectation of what the challenges will have with the budget, we might be back next year with this one.
Well, I think it's, I think it's neat. My daughter this year was able to take, you know, several college-level courses. As you know, Dr. Hoffman. And enjoyed it and gave her a really good preview as to what to expect. And it will save her money in the long run. So it was a win-win-win all around.
Is it possible for kids to graduate early with this program then as well, if like almost skip their entire senior year?
So we, we don't have students who would be eligible to do that because of the number of credits that they need.
They need four years of English and four years of history, right? So you have to take those two, at least for a senior, for at least those two.
There are a few exceptions to that for students who, you know, maybe have doubled up in a science over their junior year or something. There are a few exceptions to that for students who, you know, maybe have doubled up in a science over their junior year or something similar. But mostly, this would just be flexibility for students for something like Mr. McCucci spoke about. We have tech school students who wish to go on internships for part of their day that we already do accommodate, that this would kind of further that. And then, just in general, we hear from a lot of students that they like the opportunity for flexibility in their schedule or to work, things like that.
Great. Sounds like it's going to be a popular program. That being said, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, well, then that motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to the Policy and Programs Consent Agenda. We have acknowledged completion of 2019-2020 Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent Goals. Approve a contract between PA School for the Deaf and Quakertown Community School District Extended School Year 2020. Approve contract between DotCom Therapy and Quakertown Community School District for 2020-21 School Year. So I will need a motion to approve Policy and Program Consent Agenda as presented.
So moved, Mr. Kern.
I'll second it. Mitch?
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have some information items. There's a Nighting Elementary School Financial Update, District-Wide Paving Project Allowance Adjustment, Local Revenue Comparisons Through May 2020. Some interesting stuff there, some analysis. We also have a May 2020 End-of-the-Month Enrollment Report. You can take a peek at that. It's on Board Docs. And I'm going to move on to the new business. Anyone have any new business from the board? All right.
No, I just want to give another shout out to the administration for job well done. I know we're putting a lot of pressure on them. I know they're getting a lot of pressure from the community as well, but great job. Continued great job through this COVID pandemic.
Thank you, sir. And there's a lot of administrators and teachers out there hearing that, and I'll make sure that I share it.
We appreciate you guys so much.
Yes.
And we appreciate tonight. Before you close out the meeting, I wanted to say thank you for the discussion back after we had our presentation there, because it was very helpful. Everybody on the task forces, or most of them on the task force were listening, so we can really get to our work and bring something back in a couple of weeks that gets us closer to what we need to do.
Thank you so much. All right, we have a final public comment. Did we have anyone send us?
I do have Ms. Habberly, who I mentioned earlier on, had a comment, was a little disappointed that she was not able to address the board, so she sent me an email to read to the board. "There is much discussion and debate on how our schools will look when we return in the fall, even though decisions have not been finalized. It is our responsibility as parents, teachers, and administrators for our children to receive an education where learning is conducive to each child's needs. To be honest, our children have not received a quality, top-notch education since March 13th. We cannot continue to have our students complete their education through an online platform. It is not only unfair for students, but is equally unfair for teachers and administrators to use online learning as a means to educate our students, especially since our teachers have not received training to learn and understand how to effectively teach students online. We all need to keep in mind that according to the CDC, the percentage of COVID cases in Bucks County is currently 0.008% confirmed cases. If they do return in the fall, the chances of contracting this is extremely slim. We cannot allow our students to attend a place that is scary, uncomfortable, and unnecessarily too cautious. According to the Pennsylvania Department of Education Preliminary Guidelines for a phased reopening of pre-K through 12 schools, restrictions include mandated seating arrangements on buses, desks being placed six feet apart, limited interactions between groups of students, not being allowed to show materials with one another, and not being allowed to leave their classroom for special areas, recess, or lunch, and not being allowed to have them sit together with their peers. The restrictions, like the ones written in the PA Department of Education, will have a lasting impact on students' social, emotional, and learning and needs. As researched through an article on peer socialization in schools, children receive the following attending school through socializing with one another in the classroom. Children learn about others who may be different from themselves, students learn about the world and other cultures. Teen academic success could be connected to peer acceptance involving socialization. Extracurricular and sports activities are valued. Children who come from second-language households benefit from socialization. Children learn cognitive skills as they socialize. Children learn negotiation skills, problem-solving, and self-control. In closing, students who attend QCSD should attend in person with as minimal restrictions as possible. It's not feasible for students to receive a top-notch education if they do not have the opportunities to sit with their peers, handle school materials, go to specials, lunch, and recess. Well-rounded students attend QCSD to not only learn curriculum, but also to have the opportunity to socialize and learn lifelong skills that cannot be taught online. I would hope that PDE issues, once PDE issues final guidelines, the Quakertown School Board will seriously consider the least restrictive environment for all students to receive a fair education."
Who was that again?
That was LeAnn Habberly of Richland Township.
Thank you, LeAnn. Thank you. You know, I think the majority of us here on the board agree with that, and it's tough. We know that. We also know, I know from having two students in the district, just how hard it is to teach virtually. And I know there are parents out there who may not feel that way, who may choose to keep their kids home, and that's okay, too. And that's why we're going to hope to provide both. So thank you so much for your comment. That was very thoughtful. I appreciate it.
All right, that's the only, go ahead.
I was going to say shout out to Anita for reading that whole thing.
I'm going to check with Terry Sinangelo, who is also on this call. Terry, did you receive any email comments from parents to be read?
I also have an email that I need to read, and it's from Candace Titus from Quakertown Borough. "I am frustrated at the high school administration's handling of graduation events and their response to students who do not fall into a traditional two-parent household saddens me. Each graduate was only allowed three observers to see them walk the stage. Because my son's father and I are both remarried, I asked with an exception to be made that all four parents be allowed to attend, and I was told no. After which, I went above and emailed the superintendent and was told no again. I would much rather he have all four parents there than a professional photographer. Why couldn't someone step up outside for our turn? While I was incredibly frustrated by the response, I understood and we complied, and I did not like it, but understood. Now the parade plans are allowing only one car. In the email from administration, students are encouraged to have their immediate family members join them in the car to celebrate. Again, I emailed administration, his father and I are both remarried. He has four parents, three siblings at each house. We cannot fit into one car. Moving into the yellow, everyone staying in their car, social distancing is not a concern. Can they please make an exception? Again, I was told no, and contrary to the previous email encouraging family members to join, I was now being told by the principal that the parade is for the graduate, not their family. The following day, a fellow graduate who had chosen not to participate in the parade offered my son her spot so that both families could join. Not surprising, again, administration said no, and then suggested I spend some money to rent a larger van instead. And an administration that loves to throw the word equity around does not seem to care that all graduates receive equitable participation in graduation celebrations, like being able to have all parents there. It's okay to make accommodations in school for other types of non-traditional families, but not for divorce separation. This entire situation has robbed our children of so many experiences, and I understand these are the unprecedented times that no one was prepared for. Shouldn't we all do our best to give these kids some bit of normalcy, like having all of their parents see them walk or drive around town in celebration? We live in a world of modern blended families, and while our situation may be rare, I'm certain it's not unique. I realize my son is just one student, but he is graduating. A graduating student has worked hard over the past 12 years to graduate with honors and just wants his family there to celebrate with him. So for my son and any other graduates, the graduates that do not fall into the traditional two-parent household, I am sorry that you're being put into a position by the administration to have chosen between your family members. It's not fair, and I'm very sad by the school's response. Thank you for your time."
Wow, yeah. I mean, my advice is don't follow directions, just do it. I would have.
I would agree.
So, you know.
John!
Yeah. Because that's just, that's way too dogmatic. I think we need to be more pragmatic. I don't know if there's policies we need to adjust, but that seems a bit pragmatic, I mean, a bit dogmatic to following rules without.
So I, you know, I got to say something, because this affected my family as well personally. And while I didn't agree with the number three, I don't know where it came from. You know, two of my kids didn't see my daughter walk across the stage. That said, the other way to look at this is, this is our first crack at it, and while we may have a lot of learnings involved in it, I got to compliment the administration for what I think is going out of their way to try to figure out a very complex issue. And years ago, families only got two tickets to graduations at times. And so I get that we have luxuries today that we didn't have yesterday, maybe the day before, and I think in the future, we can revamp it. But I think, speaking personally, while I wasn't happy that my other two kids couldn't see my daughter walk, I thought they did a great job.
From my own standpoint, I can tell you my story, because I am in a situation where my children, my daughter graduated this year from a different school district. Her mother is remarried, I am remarried, and they were allowed to have two individuals with her as she walked across the stage where she was, and it was her mother and I. So clearly, the two other parents did not share anything, and there were no siblings there. It worked fine for our family. I doubt the same would be said from a lot of other families. The parents commented that this was unprecedented times, and she understood we were living through these unprecedented times. I doubt, short of giving her what she wanted, she would be happy with our decisions. And unfortunately, those are the kind of decisions the administration has to make. I wish I could, you know, wave a magic wand and give everybody exactly what they want. But that's the truth in everyday life, in a thousand other situations you come across, is you have something you want, you want it your way, and the sad truth is that a thousand little rules and regulations and decisions by other people affect your ability to have what you want, and like or not, this is the end result. I wish I had a better way to respond to her.
Yeah.
And one last point I want to make, and just to put this into some context. During this pandemic, people have been dying in hospitals across the United States by themselves, without family next to them because of the concerns associated with other people contracting it and the fatality rate that was associated with it. So, yeah, it's very trying on multiple fronts, graduation being one of them. But there are so many other very drastic moments in people's lives that have been affected by this pandemic, so.
You guys can't praise people for protesting and gathering and then not let the kids have.
Excuse me, can you please mute your microphone? This is not an open public comment time. Thank you.
Well, I did have a question. Is this not being broadcast on our Cable Access Channel as well, the parade, Dr. Horner?
I don't believe it is, sir. It could be, but that afternoon, we were broadcasting the graduation ceremony that was taped, and then we have the parade. Mr. V, are you on the phone, on the Zoom here?
Yes, I am, Dr. Horner.
You want to address that question, because I don't believe it is, but I want to make sure.
Certainly. So the parade takes place from 5:30 to about 7:30. The parade is not broadcasted by the school. Of course, there is always a chance that it's being picked up by some local news channels, but it's not being broadcasted by the school. The broadcast by the school is going to be at 8:00 PM, the virtual commencement ceremony that has been recorded and is currently being edited for broadcasting at 8:00 PM. And I'll make a comment real quick, that we will have a link on our main website at 8:00 PM on the 16th for people to be able to access that virtual ceremony.
So I have a proposal. I like Keith's point that the first crack, you know, was the virtual, you know, walking across the stage, and you kept it limited. Now we have a second crack at it. The parade with people in cars, and I would say make an exception for families who have two parents. You can have two cars.
Someone's going to have to explain to me how parents driving a separate car behind their children.
It poses any problem.
Exactly. I understand, it's not me, it's not my children, but I want to see my child driving by in a parade. I don't want to be behind them in a separate vehicle, even at the crowd. Again, it's not me, it's not my concern, it's a resident's concern, it's a valid concern. I just, I fail to see the issue.
That's an interesting point, too, Ron. All right, well.
Yeah, I was just saying, can we relax, you know, this is round number two. Can we relax that requirement to, you know, go buy a van or go rent a van? Or, you know, can't we allow two vehicles or whatever it is just to be in the parade? I don't know, just seems like a small ask and a very narrow exception for those families who have two sets of parents.
I would like to comment on that if that's appropriate, Dr. Horner.
No, no, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All righty, so, thank you for the comment. I know that's tough. I came from a mixed family as well, so. Thank you for mentioning that. So I'm going to go ahead and assume that's the end of our public comment. Okay? So we have some.
I don't have anything else.
Okay, thank you. All right, so June 25th, we have a Finance Committee meeting, also another board meeting, our last one of the school year. August 6th, Facilities Meeting, August 13th and 27th are regular board meetings. And that's all I got. So next item, I would just need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Actually, if you're going to have an executive session, you have to announce. I know we got an invite from Dr. Harz. It's still proceeding?
Yes, sir. Just need a couple of minutes.
Are we staying online? Are we getting offline?
I sent you a separate invite.
Okay, but this was announced at the beginning of the meeting, if you recall, so this is not news.
Yeah.
All right, so we will have an executive session following this meeting about a personnel matter. How about we give everybody about a five-minute bio break, and then go ahead and resume with the separate link that Dr. Horner sent? Is everybody good with that?
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, thank you all for attending. Yeah, oh, wait, who motioned?
Motion.
And then the second?
Me. Keith.
Greg, Keith, good to Keith.
It's the only motion that I'll second.
Any discussion? Favor, say aye, say aye.
Say aye.
All right. Thanks, everyone, for joining. Good evening.
See you later.
Bye-bye.